You know, his 30 seconds seem to be a long time.
Okay, all right, folks, we have the light on that says that it's ready to roll and good evening, everyone. We have a lot of new faces in the audience today because we've got a couple Boy Scout troops. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. And would Troop 99 and Troop 365 like to come forward and lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag? You can go ahead and maybe spread out some so everyone can come? All right, great. Okay.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And Boy Scouts, would you like to introduce yourself in the microphone and your name and your troop or whichever you're comfortable with?
I'm Cody Brown and I'm from Troop 365 and I'm the Senior Patrol Leader.
Wonderful, yes.
I'm Spencer Mattson, also from Troop 365.
I'm Ben Stein, 365.
I'm Jesse Cookler and I'm from Troop 365.
I'm Cooper Nelson and I'm from Troop 365.
I'm Tanner Mattson and I'm also from Troop 365.
I'm Sean Rowberry and I'm from Troop 365 of the Assistant Senior Patrol.
Wonderful.
I'm Nico McCullough and I'm from Troop 99.
I'm Christopher Hauser and I'm from Troop 99.
I am Reese Hauser and I'm the SPL of Troop 99.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much in leading us in the pledge allegiance, so we really appreciate it.[173.12][173.12](Applause). And we also want to thank you too for your service to our community and for being a part of the Boy Scout program. So they're very involved, we've seen for many years, and we're very grateful for the service that you're providing. Thank you. Okay, next would be roll call. Mary?
Holson.
Here.
Sykes.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
And then Coburn was excused and Sykes is excused. And this evening, we do have a guest counselor that is seated, sitting in for Counselor Sykes this evening, and that is Scott Pearson. So you can have that for the record. Okay, welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple proclamations this evening that I'll read and which is quite fitting, mostly for, this is one, that's more service to the community, so this, I think, is quite fitting for the Boy Scouts. This is called Extra Mile Day. This is November 1st, 2017, whereas Albany is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Albany is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Albany is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Albany acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 575 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2017. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2017 to be Extra Mile Day and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 25th day of October, 2017. So, okay. We have had this proclamation for quite a few years here with the city. Next is supporting United Way. Whereas Albany City Council hopes that all of Albany's residents enjoy healthy, meaningful, and productive lives. And whereas, United Way advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for everyone. And whereas, programs and initiatives supported by United Way focus on education, income, and health, the building blocks for a good quality of life, because everyone wins when a child succeeds in school, when families are financially stable, and when people are in good health. And whereas, it takes every part of the community, individuals, businesses, and organizations to supply the passion, expertise, and resources needed to create lasting change for the better. And whereas, Lynn County residents generously contributed their volunteer energies and pledged more than $720,000 to United Way last year, thereby investing in those programs and initiatives that improve lives and build stronger communities. And whereas, United Way of Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties kicks off annual campaigns in the fall to support those efforts throughout our region, and the Albany City Employees' Campaign is now underway and concludes on November 17th, 2017. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim support for United Way of Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties' annual campaigns and encourage Albany residents to contribute, improving lives now and into the future throughout Lynn County. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 25th day of October, 2017. And with that, we have a special guest this evening, and this is Blake Pang. He is the new Executive Director for United Way. So Blake, would you like to introduce yourself formally? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Canopa, and thank you to the honorable members of our City Council for allowing me to have a few minutes to address you. One of the things that I want to make, give you a report on in terms of our work in the community is we are really focused on being of added value to the organizations that we partner with, and obviously, one of our partners is the Boy Scouts. What we will be focusing on specifically are bringing in initiatives, best practices, and resources that'll be, that'll help all of them to be able to do their jobs better in the community. One of the things that I could happily report about is that we will be starting a volunteer matchmaking website. My hope is to have it up and running, hopefully, by the beginning of next year, which will give volunteers who want to do good service in the community and the organizations that need them, a way to find each other. So hopefully, that'll add some value to the work that they're doing. Also, we have had significant success with our Dollar Partner Imagination Library, which a lot of you have heard about and many of you have helped us to spread the word about. Last year, we were able to get 46,000 books into the hands of children throughout the county, and it was partly due to all of your help, so thank you so much for that. Finally, I want to announce that we have just tonight offered, and she has accepted, Sarah Higginson, Higginson? Has accepted a position as our new Program Coordinator, Coordinator for the Lynn County Child Abuse Network. So this position will be, in essence, air traffic controlling all the different players in the community who are focused on child abuse, to help the children and also to help the families to understand what they can do to help us to decrease child abuse across the community, which will be great for everybody. So with that, any questions or comments?
Any questions?
或是 remarks?
Okay, great, well, thank you so much.
Just want to, I've read the tasks that you've taken on and you're to be commended because I know it's a lot more than the last director did because you're combining more things now, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
And if we can help you in any way, let us know.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Blake, so much, and welcome again. Yeah, thank you. Okay, scheduled business, we have communication, and this is the presentation of the 2016 Human Relations Commission Annual Report. So Graham.
I don't think this is new to you. We saw it in August when we had the first gathering of the Human Relations Commission and the City Council, and I said at the time, this kind of fell between the cracks this year. Usually, it comes out early in the year, and here it was August, and I, you know, gut for gut. And so it was, turned to me and he said, "Graham, could you look into this?" And I said, "Okay." And I saw how we did it in the past, and that was good, and I thought, "I'll be up till 3:00 in the morning if I did it like I did in the past," so I thought, "Maybe a one-page summary of what we did during the course of 2016." And that's basically it. It flips over to the other page. And so this is a summary, do you want me to? I don't want to belabor things, but...
Do you want to highlight it on some of it, or if it stands out?
Upon recommendation of the Human Relations Commission, the City Council adopted an ordinance amendment removing the term limit for HRC members at the January 13th, 2016 meeting. And that allowed two people to continue, Kim Whitley and Tina Dodge Vera, they were We have the Human Relations, now this goes way back to February 2016, the Human Relations Award presentations, and the winners were Pat Loy and for the individual category, and Human Reaction for Racial Equity was the organizational business category. And then it just highlights what I thought was important, is just what we do, and this figured into our discussions earlier this summer. Participating in a lot of events, the annual Martin Luther King Day observance, civil rights, where we read from the Nobel Prize acceptance speech, that was in this room. Participated in the Hard to Hard Resource Fair, River Rhythm, Southern Summer Sounds, National Light Out, a lot of involvement in Festival Latino, Fish Food Drive, Summit on Homelessness, and we've all been going to the Coffee with the Cops, and we all think that is a good event. There is one tomorrow at LBCC at the student, the Hot Shot Cafe, or whatever it's called, in the Forum Building. That'll be from 8:00 to 10:00. And on the last page, the Human Relations Commission's primary focus is people. In addition to all of the above, we spent considerable time listening to people, asking questions, and observing. We, the six commissioners, we had one vacancy last year, enjoyed serving on the HRC in 2016. We did our very best to be good ambassadors for the City of Albany. We thank the City Council for its continued support, and it's signed by all those who served last year, plus one more. Just to update, we did meet yesterday. I mentioned Coffee with the Cop, the Summit on Homelessness is next Wednesday in this room from, no, not in this room, at the library, Public Library, from 5:00 to 7:00. We're also working on the Martin Luther King. We hope to have a movie at the PICS at 10:00 on Saturday, the 13th, and either Marshall, about Thurgood Marshall, or Hidden Figures, and we'd like to do the same thing after the movie, invite people over to Takeria Alonso for lunch and discussion. That's about an update. The only other thing I would update you on is I turned in my resignation yesterday, not resignation, I'm ending my term and I will not be continuing. I have a number of other volunteer responsibilities that are taking a lot of time, and I'll just say this, I enjoyed the heck out of this. I loved doing this stuff, working with people. I'll continue, I'll do any of this, you know, River Rhythm, Summer Sounds, any of this stuff, Festival Latino, love that. So, any questions?
Well, that's just disappointing to know that you're going to be, you know, resigning, yeah.
I was, I've got to say, you know, thank you for your service. Very impressed with the long list of, over the years, of how many people have worked through and with the group over the years. It's a pretty impressive list. Thank you.
Well, Graham, thank you. So personally, we will thank you for your service.[944.82][944.82](Applause). Okay, was there any other questions? Okay. Next on the agenda is Business from the Public, and I know Bill Root wanted to come forward real quick, and then I think Lisa, did I see your hand?
My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in North Albany, and I'm here today as the Chairman for the Albany Toy Run. Just shortly over a month from now, on December 3rd, we're going to be rolling for the kids. We've been doing this for close to 30 years. I have been involved for almost 20. During that time, I've got to ride in the parade, I think, twice. Most of the time, I've been involved in having to do something at the starter or the end, and so I get to ride every now and then. This is something that was done by the Association for Motorcycles of Oregon for many years, and after they disbanded, there was a group of us that said, "This is way too important to just let it go." So we've been doing it for the last six years. This is something that we have done, and we've done it very well. And at this time, I'd like to thank the City of Albany for their help and support in this endeavor that we've had. Special thanks for our Mayor, Sharon Canopa, she's been involved with coming out and giving the presentations and the proclamation, and we're looking forward to it. Hopefully, it depends on the weather, and I don't have any choice on that. We have a nice sunny day like we had today, we'll have a big turnout. If it's raining and cloudy and cold, we may not, so. Just a short little story that happened two years ago. I was at the toy run, and this lady came up to me and she says, "Is there a vehicle that can take toys to the Eagles?" And I says, "Yeah, we've got a truck here," and my car, "that we can load up with toys if you have more than you can carry on your motorcycle." She says, "Good." Well, I didn't see her again for about 30 minutes, and when I saw her again, she had a shopping cart, and it was full of toys.[1113.14][1113.14](Laughter).
Right, yeah.
And so we were meeting at the Walmart parking lot, and Walmart has become very, very involved in this. They're allowing us to not only use their parking lot, but they're providing the donuts free of cost, and they're providing some of the candies that we're going to be getting now, so I'd like to thank Walmart, too. They've been very good help for this. And I'm looking forward to this. I didn't get to go last year, I was sick, so I was spending my time in the rest area. But anyway, so looking forward to it, and hopefully, the weather will be nice.
And we're pleased that you're feeling better, Bill. Yeah, but thank you.
Any questions or concerns? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, okay, Lisa, you had an item.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grotto with the Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to take this occasion to thank the Boy Scouts. One of the things that you may or may not know that they do is they put out the flags on all the holidays, which frequently means that they get up early and before school to make sure that they are on task with both activities, and then they come back at the end of the day and burl back up all those flags and put them away. Also, wanted to thank the city for an upcoming effort. The Streetscape folks are going to make an effort to have the ability to have more flags along Lyon for our Veterans Parade. So you may be seeing a plea on Facebook this week where we may be looking for some more flags so that we can have a little more for that special parade coming up on November 11th. And also, that week, we'll be having historic uniforms on display. The VFW has a collection of historic uniforms, and they bring them into different parts, and we expect to have 18 to 20 of them on display in downtown businesses. So I want to invite you all to check that out and support our veterans through the various efforts. So again, a thank you to the Boy Scouts and to everyone that makes things possible in downtown.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, what size flags are you looking for?
I'd have to look that up. I do have a connection with the VFW here, and they've got American-made flags at a very good rate, so, but I might be interested in what options you have as well. And I know that when we got the original flags, Parlumber was very generous in the pricing on the dowels that they're, they're put on, so. But if there are community partners that would like to assist with us getting more flags, there will be room for a lot more flags as the Streetscape is finished, and being able to utilize those and make our patriotism known would be great.
Great, great. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Not, not for you. During the Streetscape program, we were talking about the closeness of the flags, and at one point, they were talking about every 10 feet, which the point was made, if you have a flag every 10 feet and you get a gust of wind, no one's going to be able to see anything. Did we ever change that, or?
Um, I think, Chris, do you know about that?
Yes, we got spread out.
They did get spread out, okay.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, good. Thank you, Lisa.[1330.64][1330.64](Laughter). Okay. Anyone else from Business from the Public? Yes. And you'll need to state your name and your address, yes.
Hi, my name is Liz Irish, and I live at 724th Avenue Southwest. I'd like to read a little something that a group of us prepared, if that would be okay. We would like to take some time today to talk about two key components that are valued in our political system, transparency and accountability. In politics, transparency is used as a means of holding public officials accountable for their words, their choices, and their actions. Political accountability refers to responsibility of government officials to act in the best interest of the people they serve. These are important values that we want to see reflected at all levels of the political spectrum, including our city government and in our community leaders. With that said, we would like to express our concern as citizens of Albany about the method by which a guest counselor, Mr. Scott Pearson, was appointed to an Albany Ward 1 seat. Our concern is less about Mr. Pearson as an individual or his qualifications than about the way it was appointed and was conducted. This appointment falls short of the degree of accountability and visibility that we expect from our public representatives, and raises serious concerns about the City Council's desire to adhere to their own prior resolutions. For some context, in 2009, the City Council recognized that there are occasions that require counselors to miss important council meetings, and that each ward should have the ability to represent in the event of these absences. These council, the council adopted Resolution 5771, allowing a counselor to appoint a non-voting guest member to the City Council. This resolution has several stipulations on the duration and circumstances by which a guest counselor can be appointed. Per Resolution 5771, guest counselors are eligible to serve on the council in a non-voting capacity for one meeting each year. Additionally, appointed as a guest counselor per the resolution requires consensus of the council prior to serving in the role. The motion to appoint Mr. Pearson did not follow either of those two requirements. Counselor Sykes, who attended via telephone while on vacation, drafted a question, which was presented and moved by Counselor Kellum during the Business from the Council portion of the October 23rd, 2017 City Council Work Group session, to appoint Mr. Pearson as a guest counselor for at least the next six meetings. The motion was approved by the majority vote, 4-2. This process was in violation of the condition of the guest counselor resolution and was not conducted in a manner allowing for transparency. First, as it has been mentioned, Resolution 5771 was written so the guest counselor could attend one City Council meeting once a year, not six meetings or an unknown amount of future meetings. Additionally, the vote to approve an appointment in the resolution requires consensus, which by definition means full agreement of all members of the council. The process by which this vote was taken creates contradictions that could have been avoided by amending or rescinding Resolution 5771 prior to the appointment. We now have both a documented process for appointment guest counselors and precedent for appointing guest counselors outside the boundaries of the documented process. If this resolution can be amended without being amended or rescinded, what is it to prevent the council from the same on any resolution? Second, this motion was made during a work group session. Work group sessions, while open to the public, are not well-attended due to the times in which the meetings are scheduled. Major issues like approving an interim voice for a ward should be considered in much more open fashion, allowing for public an opportunity to learn about who will be speaking on their behalf. Third, this question was not on the official agenda for the meeting, meaning that we concerned citizens couldn't have known that it would happen. We understand that the business from the council can be unforeseeable, but the audio from the session clearly indicates this matter had been discussed previously and, as such, should have been included on the agenda as recorded, as a recorded business item if it were to be addressed again. It should also have been addressed only after the Resolution 5771 was amended or rescinded. Some of these actions meant that we, the citizens, had no way of knowing that we were about to get a guest counselor, or that this person would be representing Ward 1 for such an extended amount of time. In a democratic society, decisions like this matter deeply to people, and we expect our public representatives to understand the importance of their public service in representing us and communicating decisions to us. If the council's desire was to be transparent and accountable, Resolution 5771 should have been amended, and this vote should have taken place before Counselor Sykes went on his extended vacation, and should have been clearly stated on public meeting agendas. This brings us to yet another reason why we are concerned about the current turn of events. In the best of words, transparency and accountability mean that the public can accurately define their public perceptions about their representatives. Public perception matters not because it is the truth, but because it's how the truth is seen through the eyes of the public. Their previous experiences and their future anticipations. The manner in which each, the manner in which events transpired this past Monday does not lead us to have a good public perception about our current city council and makes us question whether the council will follow established procedures in the future situations. In the interest of the values mentioned at the very beginning of our comment, transparency and accountability, we want to make it known and noted in the public record that we wish this and all future political processes to be made as clear as possible to the public. We want to be informed of what will happen, when it will happen, and how it will happen, and why it will happen. And in the future, we would like this resolution allowing for guest counselors to be rescinded, and that individuals who were not elected not be allowed to act on behalf of our elected representatives, except in a manner approved via the Charter or ordinance. We believe these requests reflect the high standards we expect from our city counselors. We will continue watching you in hopes of seeing that these high standards are upheld. We will continue watching you in hopes of seeing that these high standards are upheld. Thank you for your attention and addressing these matters. Albany Community Together.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. You had some very good points there. So, yeah.
Mayor, there are a whole bunch of inaccuracies there. One, Councilman Sykes did not write that. I did. He had no knowledge of it until I called him to see if he wanted to sit in. Two, Mr. Pearson is here on a non-voting basis. He does not represent any, excuse me, he does not represent anyone with a vote about Let's understand, when you're, now if you're going to do this, ask questions, that information was readily available. Instead, it came out in a blog. Okay. It would have been nice if you would have asked questions first. You made assumptions, incorrect assumptions, about some kind of wild conspiracy. And I don't know which person it was that did it, it doesn't make any difference. But the bottom line is, the conspiracy theory was incorrect. One question would have taken that, would have answered that.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
I think they were spot-on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from Business from the Public?
Yes, Steph.
Yes, you may. You'll still need to state your name and address. Yeah.
Hey, I'm Steph Newton, 839 Fifth Avenue Southwest, Ward One. I just had a quick question.
Can you spell your last name?
Yeah, N-E-W-T-O-N.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, like the cookie.
Yeah.
But, so Rich, I had a quick question. So if Scott doesn't have a vote, but would you say that he would have a benefit of joining you guys at a work session or at any other meetings and having more of like a way to discuss his opinion or viewpoints even though he wouldn't be elected as someone that would be forward?
He is not elected.
I know he's not elected, but if he was able to say, hey, we're working at this work session together, let me give you my perspective, while not able to vote, would he be able to have more of like a way to, you know, impress his own views or opinions or what have you? I was just wondering if that's, you know, something possible that might happen and that might be also a concern of people that, you know, live in Ward One. Again, I don't even know you, Scott. I apologize, I have nothing against you at all.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering, since, you know, we want, we have elected officials, we want them to be the ones speaking and still be the ones voting. It would kind of be like a, like if I were to like come to the work sessions and like sit at the table with you guys and say, oh, actually, this is how I feel about this.
But you wouldn't have been picked by the person who is on vacation.
Did you pick Scott, though?
No.
And then ask, okay, I wasn't sure if that's how, what you explained.
Mike, Mike picked Scott.
Okay.
And the time that he, that we, two weeks ago, when we vote on it, there was, imagine a group of people, you know, one person showed up who ran against, well, who was the person who was running against Mike to begin with complaining about it. Well, people have a right to do that. And there were two people missing at that point, two counselors. So we had a total of four counselors. So you really can't pass anything unless everyone agrees.
Okay, but with a guest, they still can't vote. So you wouldn't have really passed anything regardless, correct?
Well, he would not, he doesn't get to vote. But two counselors were missing. Monday, those two counselors were back. One, by virtue of a telephone, that is done on a regular basis, and the other came back from, I don't know, whatever she was excused from.
Okay.
It was just the next opportunity to do it.
Okay, cool. I was just trying to clarify if there was a benefit to having a guest counselor, if they were able to express more of their viewpoints even though they weren't elected officials and they weren't able to possibly sway any vote either way.
Been done a number of times in the past.
So that's just, that's what I wanted to clarify. So that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. Is there anyone from Business from the Public?
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
So I thought I'd introduce myself since you've brought this about and you said you didn't know me. My name is Scott Pearson. I do live in North Albany. I have lived there for about fifteen years, so I am in Ward One. I have been serving on the Budget Committee now for four years. I believe it's four years. I am the chairman of the Transient Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and before that, the Transient Lodging Tax Ad Hoc Committee. So I've held several city volunteer positions representing our community and representing the business interests and personal interests of residents. I've been a football coach, baseball coach, basketball coach for many years in this community. I volunteer my time in many different areas, so I think I am in touch with what's going on in the community. I've had an opportunity to be able to do this once before, about five or six years ago, and as a result of having an opportunity to hold this position, it caused me to get involved in the community at a whole different level. It caused me to join and/or ask to serve as a position on the Budget Committee and the Transient Lodging Tax Committee. I stepped up my involvement with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm this year's chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. I serve on the Good Government Council, the Government Affairs Committee. I serve on many volunteer organizations associated with this community and I have a passion for helping this community, increasing commerce in our community. I, I'm very passionate about what's going on. I'd like to think that I'm reasonably informed and so if you're worried about somebody representing Ward One, I think I bring to the table a lot of passion and a lot of background knowledge. And I'm not here to waste the council's time. I'm not here to ask questions about things that I'm not informed on. I would be somebody that would be just a voice of reason, say, have you considered such and such? I wouldn't try and impose my opinion. I would be more of an observer, an asker, and somebody that would hope that they take a good path in coming to their, their decisions. I think it is a great honor to be able to set up here at the podium and to see what goes on and to interject an opinion if I feel I have an opinion that would add value. But if I don't have anything, I won't be making any thoughts known because I'm not here to make a speech just to hear myself talk. So I thought appropriate just to let you know who I am since many of you didn't know who I was. But I thank the council for even giving me the opportunity to set up here and I think it's a good thing. I think council members should do this for all of their extended absences or vacations. This is the way that you recruit new individuals to get involved in our community, to serve on the Planning Commission, to serve on the Budget Committee, to serve on other committees where we need people. It's a way to be able to show confidence to your ward and your constituents to be able to say, I'd like to hear your opinion, would you represent our area in my absence? I think it's a lot better than not having a counselor here. So hopefully you know me a little better now.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Okay. All right. That's it for Business from the Public. Yes, I kind of don't want this to be a debate-type form.
Can you be heard quick?
Okay. If you can maybe just ask the question to me then on that. Can you do that? Yeah. We like, the Business from the Public is not set up as like a debate-type forum.
I'm not here to debate, I'm just here to make a comment and not even a question.
Okay. So can you state your name too?
Sure. My name is Clarice Amorim Freitas. That's two last names, A-M-O-R-I-M-F-R-E-I-T-A-S. I live on 728 Montgomery Street Southeast. That's Ward One. And I thank you for your work, Ms. Scott Pearson. We appreciate all that you do for the city and for the community. However, if you were our elected representative, I wouldn't be here to say anything. But unfortunately, you're not, perhaps yet. And it concerns me, not that you're sitting out there, but that it seems like your own resolution was not respected or bated a little bit for that to happen. And we would just like to see procedure be, like we said earlier, clear, transparent, and accountable. That's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Clarice. Okay. All right. That's it from Business from the Public. Council, next you have a resolution and this one is on page sixteen. And does staff have any comments over this? This is over the card lock fuel for five years, the contract. Yeah, Stewart?
Mayor, I could give some background information on this item before the city council for the benefit of those that aren't familiar with it. So the city has previously had a contract with PetroCard for city fueling at commercial locations. That contract with PetroCard matured this year and so we issued an RFP in May of this year to request proposals for vendors to provide the fueling services to the city. The city council considered those proposals in June of this year and awarded the contract to Carson for the Petro, or for the commercial card fueling. In a review with Carson, following the city council award of that contract, we identified that there were elements of the contract that were in error and the, when those elements of the contract were considered, their price was higher than the PetroCard price. Carson is not able to honor the price that was offered in their original contract and so we're before the city council this evening to request that this city council consider rescinding the contract that was issued, awarded previously by council to Carson and awarding the contract to PetroCard as the low bidder for the fueling for the next five years with an option to extend to additional years. And I could respond to questions if there are.
Okay. Questions, Bethany?
Two questions. First thing is, was it, it was not found during, when you got the RFP before you came to us and we awarded the contract? How could that be missed? I mean...
It was not included in, what was, the error turned out to be a misunderstanding by Carson of what would be included in the fixed costs of the contract. The specific question had to do with the state gas tax. And they felt because we were a local government that we would be exempt from the state gas tax. However, the gas tax is not imposed on buyers at this end, it's imposed on distributors previously. So it is an included cost that they did not include in their bid. It was an error on the part of Carson.
Okay. And then what happened between awarding of the contract and now?
We came to the city council and requested an extension of the existing contract with Petro.
Okay.
And that's what we're operating under now. That extension does expire in October, so, or by the end of this month. So we're before the city council to ask for renewal of the contract with Petro.
Yeah, makes sense. I just couldn't remember if it would.
Yeah.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
All right. So council, you have a resolution on page sixteen.
Move to accept the resolution repealing Resolution Number 6621 and reawarding the contract to Petro.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Adoption of the consent calendar. We have quite a few items on there, but some of this was also at our Monday's meeting. So if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Would like to pull off item number three.
Number three? Okay.
Can you tell me what page?
Item number three is going to be page thirty-seven. Was there anything else that needed to be pulled off? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Move for the adoption of the consent calendar minus item three.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Ray, that would be on page thirty-seven?
That's the investment policy and I had a constituent ask, yeah, why couldn't they or other citizens of Albany invest directly in Albany bonds? They believe in the city and what it does and they'd like to do a direct investment. So I posed the question to Stewart and he came back with some very lucid answers, which I passed on to the constituent, but I think it would be good to hear from Stewart as to the ramifications of being able to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Ray, so for bonds that the city has already issued, there is opportunity for buyers to participate in the selling and reselling or repurchasing of those bonds. Bonds are marketable on a secondary market, so they are initially purchased generally by institutional investors who then seek private investors with different portions of the initial issuance of the bonds. So for bonds that are outstanding, the most recent example would be our general obligation bonds for the police and fire stations. Those bonds have been sold to initial investors upon the closing or the sell of the initial bonds and they are marketed continually on the secondary market where people can look for maturities. If residents wanted to consider looking for those bonds, probably the best approach is to contact a broker who would be tapped into the market and knowing where those bonds would be available when maturities became available and would be able to participate with others in a competitive buying to purchase bonds or portions of those bonds. If the city were considering a new issue of bonds, then we have opportunity to consider the front end of the approach. Typically, if we're, as Counselor Kupskinski was describing, if we wanted to make bonds available for other than institutional investors, then the denominations would probably be a lot less. It would be a little bit longer extended process in order to prepare to issue the bonds and would probably be a little bit more expensive to the city. There would be additional oversight that would be needed particularly in areas of suitability of the bonds for the individual buyers. The IRS is pretty particular that, that buyers be what are referred to as sophisticated buyers and that they would understand the suitability of buying tax-exempt bonds versus other types of bonds. So there's a little bit more oversight that's required in the front end if we were to issue going forward bonds in smaller denominations that might invite other than institutional investors to participate, but those options are available.
Can you tell us approximately how small those denominations might get to be?
Five thousand dollars.
Excellent.
Yeah.
To that, to that point, sometimes you can buy bonds on the open market, you can buy pieces of a bond. So, you know, when you, you end up, oh, I have two thousand dollars to invest, you can, you can put two thousand dollars toward a specific bond. That is done via the broker, though. That's not. It's like any, many other stocks. You can just say, okay, give me two thousand dollars for this and you get 3.141794 shares of something.
How long does it take for them to get paid back?
That's part of the schedule in the initial, sell of the initial bonds. So as I was mentioning, and bonds are always, are most often referred to in plural because of that very point, that there are different times, there are different maturities, and there are different interest rates. So generally, like the current market, interest rates are very low, so the bonds that mature in the short term have a lower interest rate, whereas those that are extended out to mature in future years have a higher interest rate. So there's a blended rate over the life of the bonds. The final bonds would not mature until the end of the twenty-year period or fifteen-year period that was initially established.
Twenty years would be a bad bet for somebody like me. So, so in theory, somebody could say, I'm going to buy this five thousand dollar bond directly. I own a piece of Albany and you owe me, right?
Yes. Dividends would be issued as payments are made. That's correct. And depending on fluctuations of interest rates in the market, those bonds, those smaller denominations of bonds may be worth more or less than what you purchased them for. That's another part of the suitability that the IRS would look at and the sophisticated investor, knowing that you could lose some of that money if interest rates drop below the value that the bonds were sold at initially.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else?
You mean, don't you want?
Move to approve item number three on the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next, council, what's handed out on the dais is a resolution. This was from Monday's meeting and this is for doing some changes to some of the parking that's around the post office. And this would be on Calipulia and on Second Street. So Calipulia would end up being three-hour customer employee permit for eleven spaces and Calipulia would end up being from thirty-minute to three-hour park, customer-only parking. So...
On Second.
What's that? I mean, on Second. Yes. Second Street, please. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right, Lisa, you got it. Sorry it took several meetings to get through this, but now we leave it in your hands and you can be able to get the rest of it worked out, so. But, but thank you so much for your assistance too and, and working with the downtown businesses and the carousel and helping out, so.
And I would think if there's still friction, they can come back and they can adjust some of it.
Yeah. Yeah. If it doesn't work, let us know. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Council, Business from the Council. Bessie, anything this evening?
Nothing.
Okay. Jeff, anything?
Yes. If I can find it here, a, one of my constituents in North Albany looked out his window and saw him taking down power poles and putting up big steel power poles on the, apparently in the right of way there, near Violet Avenue. And I wondered, does any of our staff know anything about that change in the power structure? any of our staff know anything about that change in the power structure? Comment you could make about it. I told them I'd ask at the council meeting, and I, I thought we might have more staff here than we do. So, I'm not going to, I feel bad if you don't have an answer for it.
Is that BPAs improvements they're doing for North Albany, I think?
Or the big towers?
I told them it was probably enlarging the power structure, and that progress is sometimes a good thing, but sometimes annoying for some, too.
I walked all the way up here to tell you I don't really know. I've seen them assembling those towers down on, by Hickory Street. It is BPA has most of the power lines up there, so I assume they're just replacing them with a better structure. But I can contact them, and we have that contact.
Okay, I can give you his phone number. Why are we doing now, or I'll catch you after?
I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay. I'll ask you this, though. Do we have about as much sway with the power company as we do with railroads?
Yep.
In other words, hardly nothing.
Yeah, their easements are pretty
Pretty well controlled.
Broad. They, you know, they go through there and clear out all of the underbrush, and we sometimes get complaints from neighbors where they just butcher every living thing underneath there for safety reasons.
Yeah, he commented about that, too.
Yeah.
He said, "Well, maybe with these bigger towers, maybe they can let some of the stock grow a little bit."
It doesn't matter how high the lines are. They just scorched earth underneath there usually, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose we could comment, but not too much of him.
Yeah, we've commented in the past because one of them on Crocker, where it crosses Crocker, there at the bottom is a little creek. And so, we did get them to come out and talk with us about not putting so much debris in the creek, but
Okay.
That's about it. That's about all we got out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that it? All right, Rich?
I have one. Today, today, Tuesday, at the Commissioner's meeting, they authorized the advancement of an accelerated taking of the house on Maryland that we had so much trouble with. So, they're going to end up in, instead of like eighteen months to two years, it'll be like six months before they have a hold, have a hold of it. And this is something that is continuing, and it's going to get used more as time goes on. This was a set-aside program where the state pays for people's taxes if you're elderly. And what's supposed to happen is, time goes on, you sell the place or you pass on, and then the, the house is then sold, and everything is paid back, and the state gets seven percent. Unfortunately, there are more and more instances where all somebody's family goes away, or they don't have any family. And so, the house deteriorates, and by the time they, they die, then who knows where the family is. People can't find them. It goes for years until people next door are complaining about the vermin and the roof falling in and all the rest of it. I don't know if there is anything we can do to be more proactive if we know that there is a set-aside program on, on a house, besides just the neighbors saying, "Hey, can somebody get these people to," with Officer Shandell going by and saying, "Hey, you need to do something about this." Maybe if there's a way that the county can let us know that this is one of those properties that no one can find who it is. So, we are on the problem quicker, because what happens right now is the people, the taxpayers of Lynn County are going to be out tens of thousands of dollars in interest that has been accruing. And of course, the house has been deteriorating all the time, and there wasn't anything to point to before that says, "Hey, we need to do something about it quicker." So, whether or not we can work with the county, or if we need to get ahold of Senator Gelsner and, and Representative Olson to maybe get the interest rate changed, or do something different than's happening now, because there is a line of these things in Lynn County happening, and it's getting bigger and bigger, and it's going to be, you know, millions of dollars down the road in a very long.
Do we know who operates that program?
The state.
State.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's kind of like dealing with BPA.
Yeah, it's called a senior deferral program, and I think one of the problems is that, I mean, they have to meet a certain income requirement and everything, and then they can have it deferred, and they can pay if they want. In fact, it's better if they do pay a little bit, but most of them don't. But now people are living longer, and I think that's where the problem is coming, coming in.
Well, if you're, if you're most, like, I don't, ninety percent, ninety-something percent of the time, there's not a problem, because, okay, we're going to move into assisted living or something, and at that point, their house gets put on the market, and, you know, it hasn't deteriorated to the point where it's not worth anything. The place on Maryland Avenue, on Street.
Street.
Street is, it's just a pile of rubbish.
It's been a problem for a long time.
Yeah, and it's been, and that happens because the family doesn't want to deal with it. I mean, there are a number of reasons why. This particular one, the children are off someplace, and they don't want to come, and there have been issues between them and the, it's a mess. So, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it.
Well, encourage the county to encourage the state to get somebody responsible handling that program that will bring things to an end.
I will contact Andy to see if there is something he can do. Contact Sarah, and maybe we can fix it. That's all.
Sounds good. Okay, all right, Ray?
Yes, this is possibly a question for Chris. Hasso had in his column the other day, just recently, about Thornton Lake, and he mentioned there was a no-parking sign there. Trying to figure out why is there a no-parking there when there's only one little tiny area that you can park at to walk into the park?
That's another, I don't know. I answered the Parks Department. I don't know. Peter, do you know?
We'll find, we'll find out.
Yeah, I, I don't know for sure. I know that that's intended for access to get in and maintain that area. Maybe it's not intended to be public access yet, but I'll find out.
I think if my memory tells me, there was people that were using it as parking or putting for sale signs up and along.
Selling cars.
Yeah.
So... Yeah. Okay, is that it? All right. Scott, any comments?
Sure, just real quick. So, I know my presence tonight is an area of sensitivity. I wanted to thank the City Council for allowing me to be here tonight and to, again, serve. I didn't go through this much stress five, six years ago when Floyd Collins asked me to do the same exact thing. So, surprised tonight, but I understand. I understand your point of view, and I appreciate that you said something. I do make the following commitment to the council members, though. I commit that I will be prepared for every meeting. I won't just show up to show up. I will be respectful of the proceedings and the positions. I will try and add value, if I have value to add. I will do my best to represent our ward and the constituents of Ward One, and I hope that this is just a stepping stone for me to get involved with other opportunities in this community to give freely of my time, my talents, and my treasures. I do believe in this community just as much as so many of you do, and I hope to serve in a larger capacity in the future. So, I'm not moving away. I'm not going away. I love this community, and I hope to add value in the future. And I hope, through my involvement, that I will only be able to add confidence in those who spoke tonight. So, thank you for saying something, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Okay, all right. I didn't have anything this evening. It's just, I don't know if anyone else has been getting phone calls about property tax statements that have been mailed out. Everyone's received in the mail. So, I've had quite a few, but it has been quite nice that it's not any of the city tax that was increased. There was nothing of a new bond that we had, because ours was a replacement of our existing bond, but it was the school district's bond that did increase. But also, the values, the property values have gone up, and it was nice to say that the city has no control over that, and that's the county that has that, that say over the values. So, so I kind of, all the concerns I had, I was able to just kind of shove it off to the county this time. So, that was kind of easier than in the past. But, yeah, Dick?
Yeah, walking the dogs, I kind of figured that my, my poor old house is worth about twenty times now what it was before we bought it. I don't know if I can blame urban renewal or be glad of urban renewal, but it's more valuable.
Yeah. Yes, so, exactly. But, yeah. Graham, were you wanting to say something, or?
I forgot to ask something. This actually is Business from the Council.
Okay.
And then quickly, before the question.
Oh, you'll need, can you come to the podium? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, in addition to the annual reports and the minutes that you get, how else, we didn't clarify this at our two meets, how else would you like to be informed? Would you like one of us to be here quarterly to inform you of?
Well, if you, from my perspective, if what you have is you want to try some new thing that you'd like to have support on, make sure we know about it, because, well, hard to, hard to give you a hand if we don't know that the hand is needed.
Okay, what does that mean?
What that means is...
Email something or show up here and talk?
Communicate. I don't care.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's if you, if you, like I've said in the past, if you have a problem, you know, communication is the thing that makes sure that everyone can start doing something about it.
So, we would communicate it through Scott or Jorge or whoever. Is there that guy?
That can be, yeah.
Grandma was going to offer that also, that you can also come through staff.
Arthur Scott, Peter.
Right. And, and I think that would be, you know, as it comes to your meetings, and Jorge's a staff member, and then he'll know. You know, I mean, it's wonderful. We love having the HRC out there in the community and really being active. So, it probably, if there's ever anything that looks like it's sort of towards policy, then that would be what would need to come, and then Jorge can bring that. I don't see that there's going to be anything we need to worry about, so...
Thank you. There was, they all wanted to know that.
Scott may be sitting here, but I'm not giving him my job.
All right. Thank you, Graham. Okay, that was it. Now, Peter, did you have anything to say?
I just wanted to acknowledge that there was some heavier than normal traffic in downtown today, and just note that as we try to get ready for Veterans Day and the holiday season and clean up the streetscape project for, for the winter. So, I acknowledge that that was a pretty tough thing to deal with.
Yep. I did get stuck, I think, yesterday. Took about ten minutes to get down Lion Street, so, yeah.
Okay, is that it? All right. Staff, have anything, anything else?
A reminder on your meeting schedule. The Wednesday, November first council meeting has been canceled in favor of a work session on Monday at four. And part of the reason that meeting was changed was so that people can attend, and that you are all invited once again to the Summit on Homelessness on Wednesday at five, from five to seven at the Main Library.
Okay.
Monday the first, Monday the thirtieth, or Monday the...
Monday the, Monday the thirtieth is a work session. Wednesday the first is the summit.
Yep. Next Monday is a work session. Yeah. Okay, anything else? All right. So, with that, then we do meet next Monday. Don't forget the Homeless Summit. Then we have a work session on November sixth, on a Monday, and a regular session on November eighth. And we also have Budget Committee meeting in between on that Tuesday, November seventh. So, Counsel, you've got a lot of upcoming meetings next couple of weeks. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks, for attending. With that, we're adjourned.